So at this time, uh, we would entertain a motion or a nomination for town council president for two thousand and twenty-four.
I'll nominate Chad Blake for town council president.
I'll second. Do we have any other nominations?
Can you guys just speak up because you can barely hear?
Do we have any other nominations for town council president? All right, we have a motion and a second.
Everything's sacred.
Gary?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes. All right, uh, and then we would accept the nomination or motion to appoint the vice president of the town council.
I'll make a motion to appoint Brian Robertson as vice president for town council.
I will second that motion.
Do we have any other nominations for vice president of the town council? All right, we have a motion and a second.
Gary?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Brian?
Stay.
Chad?
Yes. All right. And then, uh, I would make a motion to appoint Teresa Reford as our, uh, secretary for the year two thousand and twenty-four. Second. Any other nominations? All right, we have a motion and a second.
Gary?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes. Okay. Uh, at this time, we would open up, uh, the meeting to public comments and concerns. Uh, anyone that has anything that they, uh, would like to address that's not currently on the agenda for the evening, uh, please come forward to the podium, uh, state your name and your address and, uh, any concerns or comments that you might have.
Hi, Elizabeth, um, I was just going over the-
Oh, I know, need you to state your address.
John Street, sorry. I was going over the additional appropriations on the agenda and I was just trying to understand, I'm ignorant to all of this. So I was wondering, as a member that's trying to be more educated in the town, if you could go through whenever you get to those and under- help us understand.
So those already being on the agenda and as have their own public hearings that go with them.
Yes.
There will be an opportunity for questions to be asked at that time. So, but, uh, we, we will obviously go through them and then give the opportunity for questions.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Questions, comments, or concerns? Okay. Uh, at this time, uh, we have a presentation from our chief of police, uh, on the two thousand and twenty-four total eclipse planning. Uh, I will refrain from making my dad joke.
Please do.
It was a great joke.
Okay, so, um, if any of you are not aware, April eighth of two thousand and twenty-four, Indiana is in a prime location to view the total solar eclipse. They've broken it down even farther by county with Indiana, which is the prime, so we're a second-tier county. However, they're still expecting the population of Madison County to quadruple. Um, some of the things that we've talked about, we've had one meeting so far, we're planning on doing some more, and it was just a brief to get us going. As far as the lead for the state, the man at Department of Homeland Security is the lead, um, agency for the state, the lead law enforcement agency is going to be DNR. Some of the things they, they talked about obviously is, last time they had one of these, I believe, don't quote me on this, but it was ninety-eight, it was in Kentucky. Um, location, I definitely know here on my positive one. Some of the things that happened during that three-day event, day prior, day of, day after. Grocery stores ran out of food, gas stations ran out of gas, cars were running out of gas on the interstate, people were leaving them. Trips that would take five hours on the interstate were taking seventeen hours. So, we have obviously three state roads that run through or around our area. State parks are already filled up, mountain parks are already filled up, every Indiana state park is already booked full. Going rates right now in Hamilton County, which is a tier-one, well, this was of, of about two and a half weeks ago, was about two thousand dollars for those three days. And they were just about all full. Going off of that, so basically what we're, we're concerned about, and why I think my recommendation to you after I get done with presenting all of this is that, we perform some sort of a group. I don't want to call it committee, it's not, it's not a voting or anything, it's just a group and it'd be consistent of a representative police department, representative fire, representative utilities, representative of the town, to allow us to go ahead and start doing the planning. You know, it's like anything else, it may come and go, and there may be nothing, but if we don't plan and it does come, we don't want that either. Uh, there were some recommendations that they made, the biggest thing is, is just making sure that your town is aware of what's going on. As far as like residents, some of the things to think about is, it is going to be a total eclipse. Realize that your animals are going to act different, they're not going, they're going to be confused. If you're driving, realize that the deer and the wildlife are going to be confused, so they're going to be out, normally your nocturnal animals are going to be out. So there's a lot of things that could, that go along with this. We're getting more information as we get it, we can pass it along, but we would definitely think benefit from forming some sort of a group to make sure that the town does as much as it can. One of the recommendations was also that there possibly be emergency declaration ready to go, no different than a snow emergency, that if you need to keep your main streets open, just like we do in a snow emergency, make it a route, but that's obviously up to the, the council to decide what we do. And we can discuss those things further, but that's the biggest thing about the, the April eighth solar eclipse. As we get more information, as we learn more, we'll start going better, it's going to obviously get here sooner than later.
When's your next, uh, meeting?
They haven't come out with the date yet, so they're basically for a local from Madison County right now, EMA's heading it up. Um, there's a few select individuals from, uh, EMA Sheriff's Department. Uh, some of the wrecker, believe it or not, even the wrecker companies are, are sending representatives to this. They go to the big meetings and then they come back and filter it down to us, that way we're not all trying to get to these state meetings. I haven't got them the date yet, as soon as I get it, I'll, I'll let you know, but I've already spoken to the fire department, they're all on board about getting somebody there. I just think it'd be prudent for the town to go ahead and put a group together. I don't have a lot of information on it other than that, I could talk for hours on details about what we learned, but that's really nothing, nothing there, so it's my question.
What about any kind of specifics?
As far as-
What to start looking to do?
Yes, I mean, I can go through, so one of the biggest things that I, for us, what we're going to make sure we do is, if we already know that fuel stations are running out, and we've got a state road en route to the number-one area in this, in local county around us that goes, making sure that our fuel tank, utilities topped off, because law enforcement, we may not, we may run out of gas, we may not be able to get gas there, we may have to use that. Fuel, uh, at the, you know, the fire department, same thing. Uh, one of the things they recommend is, uh, municipalities buy anybody who's working that day glasses, because you know, actualors where you know your idiots are going to look at the sun, um, and you don't want that liability, if they're on the clock, they look at it. In the past, it's taken up to a week sometimes to have, show signs of danger. You know, some of the other things they, they talked about was, obviously make sure you store food. Even as a town, making sure if you, if you do have pantries, maybe work with the pantry to make sure the pantry has food. Personnel, I, I can tell you right now already, the, the police department for that three-day period, probably a five-day period, uh, will be no vacations, no time off allowed, other than normal time off and the, the day prior, day of, day after, we may even have people on standby in town because if anybody's got to travel, you know, they may not make it here. So, the big other thing they were talking about was gas, they didn't go a lot into detail, but obviously utilities, you know, trying to repair a water leak, gas leak in total darkness, um, don't know how often they do that, because most utilities work during the day. So those are things that they, they brought up and talked about.
Okay, good, some ideas.
Yeah, uh, so, uh, what we'll do is look at, uh, before our next meeting, working on figuring out the details of what a committee or group or however that looks, uh, to, uh, to get that figured out in form, so that we can have plenty of time and get the plan together.
And once we get information, I think we could post it then out on, on the town's Facebook page or the, um, webpage. I know there's a pamphlet from Department of Homeland Security that's out there, but it's, it's more of a generalized, it's not really-
The details.
Yeah, for any details, but as we learn more, we can obviously post that out there.
Get some public on there too. Okay, anything else? Thank you, sir.
Well, yes, but he's not here, so that's great.
You know, we could, we can pass item B.
Okay.
Yes, item B, um, they will be here in the January meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, it's good.
Okay, next up, uh, court treasurers department. Anything to report other than our two, uh, line items there?
I will be out the sixteenth of January, I have to go to regional training down in Indianapolis. The utility guys are working with me, we make, we will probably try to stay open with our part-time person and then, uh, one of the, usually mine helps me out and comes to the office and we have to have somebody who has, is on the gas, um, alcohol and drug policy, so-
Present.
Present, so, so anyway, that's the only thing I can think of.
All right.
About to print off the table document, I apologize for that, so I will have that one, both of them next, or all of them for next one.
Uh, claims, everybody should have a copy of the claims, everybody had an opportunity to look over them. Does anybody have any questions on the claims as presented? Okay, we would, uh, entertain a motion to approve the claims as presented?
I'll make that motion to approve the claims as presented.
Second. Chad?
Abstain.
Brian?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
All right. Okay, next we have the approval of meeting minutes, everybody should receive copies, no?
Not yet, so with Teresa being left essentially alone in town hall, uh, and some additional, um, things happening, a little behind on the minutes, memoranda, as we will start calling them, and we're going to help her catch those up. So you'll see on the January meeting, the minutes for October, November, and December. Bear with the, uh, circumstance at this point, um, nothing, uh, other than amount of time, so.
All right. All right, next, uh, we have some public hearings for some ordinances. Uh, so at this time, I would, uh, suspend the regular town council meeting and open up the, uh, public hearing for ordinance seven dash two thousand and twenty-three for additional appropriation to the general fund. All right, uh, at this point, we'll kind of go over what we have going on here. Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, I'll cover the information and then that way they can ask questions. Uh, so we have a grand total of twenty thousand three hundred dollars of additional appropriations. Uh, what these additional appropriations are, um, every year at the end of the year, uh, we have to make sure that every fund that we have that was budgeted for the year, uh, still has at least a zero balance by the time it's all done. Uh, and the state allows us the time to do additional appropriations to finish that up for the year. Uh, and what it is, is these are categories that over the course of the year, we have spent more than we originally budgeted. This is actually a, a very good report for us, I, I know four years ago it was over a hundred and three thousand, so, uh, we've definitely gotten better at our budgeting. Uh, so the first thing that we have, uh, is the, in the general fund, uh, we have four thousand dollars additional for wages, eight hundred dollars for supplies, and three hundred dollars for other services. Or sorry, three thousand, I apologize. Then in local road and street, uh, we have an additional twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh, continuing education, uh, which is the, uh, in the police department, we have an additional seventy-five hundred dollars. And, uh, we received, uh, monies from opioid settlements this year that we had spent twenty-five hundred dollars out of and had never done an appropriation for that money, so we have to do the appropriation at this time for the twenty-five hundred dollars. So that is a grand total of twenty thousand three hundred dollars, uh, in additional appropriations for ordinance seven dash two thousand and twenty-three. Does anybody in the public have questions? Please come up to the podium. And we will do our best to answer.
Do I need to state my name?
Yeah.
John Street. So I noticed on, on wages under, under the general fund, do each depart- does each department have their own wages that that comes out of, or are all the wages lumped into the general fund and that?
That is all of the wages that are paid out of the general fund, so, um, that are not police department wages, okay? So if you take our utility departments, those folks, they are paid out of the utilities, they are not paid out of the general fund, okay? Uh, so those wages would include town council members, uh, court treasurer's office, um, what else do we pay out of the general fund?
Court treasurer's department.
Court treasurer's, the, the office personnel, uh, those things, so, uh, over the course of the year, that's where that total on, so.
And then, um, on other supply, or other services, what would that entail, just so I can understand?
We have a complicated appropriation report, we need to pull on Dex, he's pulling that up for us. So appropriations, then one dash three hundred. Yep, so that is for professional services, and, uh, we did not properly budget the amount of money for our streetlights, because we do have to pay that electric bill.
So, okay, so that type of thing comes out.
Yep.
Okay. All right, I think that's all I have for right now, I may be back up.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, at this time, I'd end the public hearing and resume the, uh, regularly scheduled town council meeting. Uh, all right, uh, council, before us, we have, uh, ordinance seven dash two thousand and twenty-three for additional appropriations to, uh, the listed funds in the ordinance. Questions, comments, or some concerns from the council?
Our consensus is that we've done a better job budgeting this year, correct?
Correct.
Hopefully that's correct.
All right, at this time, we would entertain a motion to approve ordinance seven dash two thousand and twenty-three as presented on the first read.
Yeah, you need to pass this, you need to suspend regular rules, not requiring the three readings, and then pass this tonight on the first reading, so.
There is a deadline, uh, what our council is as by as in yourself, uh, that we are required to hit for the state, so, uh, once we have the, we still have to do the first reading, and then we can suspend rules and pass. So, at this time, we would entertain a motion, uh, to approve ordinance seven dash two thousand and twenty-three as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Chad?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes. Got to keep us all toast.
Uh, okay, at this time, uh, I would make a motion, uh, to suspend, uh, regular rules and approve ordinance seven dash two thousand and twenty-three on the first read.
Second. Who's got the second?
Lindsay.
Chad?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
So passed.
All right, at this time, I would like to suspend the regularly scheduled lapel town council meeting and open up a public hearing for an additional appropriation, eight dash two thousand and twenty-three, uh, for funds in motor vehicle highway. So, uh, what we have here is, uh, an additional appropriation, uh, in motor vehicle highway to cover wages. Uh, what this is, this is wages for our street department, uh, the folks that go around and fill potholes and pick up sticks and all of those things, so, the amount requested is twenty-four thousand dollars.
Where is that one at? That is in the one.
Yep.
Yep, right there. And that's in the way we're called.
All right. Public have any questions on the additional appropriation of twenty-four thousand dollars for wages in the street department? Out of the motor vehicle highway fund? No one? Okay, at this time, I will end the public hearing for ordinance eight dash two thousand and twenty-three and reopen the regularly scheduled town council meeting. What's that? Oh, no, they're just grouped together. So anyone clicking on our link, uh, you see both ordinance seven dash two thousand and twenty-three and ordinance eight dash two thousand and twenty-three together. Um, we are only talking about ordinance eight. Does the council have any questions, comments, or concerns about ordinance eight dash two thousand and twenty-three? Okay. All right, very good, at this time, we would entertain a motion to approve, uh, ordinance eight dash two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Gary?
Uh, yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to suspend rules and approve ordinance eight dash two thousand and twenty-three on the first read.
I'll make that motion.
Gary, you got it?
Gary?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes. Okay. That is it for our public hearings tonight. Uh, unfinished business, um, we have a request to consider, uh, some signage installs in the public right-of-way for Paxverum. I believe we have our representative from Pax here tonight, looks like he has some handouts for us.
I'm Andrew from, if anybody doesn't know me, employee number one, all that jazz. Just for you guys, if you don't want one, we saved some trees. Just a real, uh, high overview of what is happening.
Watch cables. We saved the out.
Um, so again, I'm Andrew with Paxverum, um, I believe last time Cole, our head brewer showed up, there was an issue with where the sign was going to go. Um, it was technically on Madison County's property. Um, we have since talked to the person and they are okay with us having it, um, basically moved to a lapel's property, barring a vote and all that, but, um, if you look at the last page, uh, basically we're thirteen, uh, in Peloton kind of lineup. There's a sign that turned left onto Peloton Avenue, um, that would kind of be in the general area of where a sign is approved to go. Um, that's lapel property in Madison County, signed off on all of that. The other side would be right where the library basically is, turning right onto Main Street. I wasn't there last time, but I believe there wasn't any concerns with that, it was more so the first time. Jason, our owner, went through, um, there's some emails with, um, uh, basically the guy from Indot approving and kind of directing where we can go. But yeah, basically just signage to locate people to the brewery, um, from sixty-nine. Questions?
No, I think this is great.
There's probably too much in there, so if there's questions, feel free, but, um, just, again.
We, we definitely want to bring people into town to experience the good things that we have here, so, yeah. This all looks, uh, to be right, I know this, uh, the Indiana logo sign company, uh, they do a lot, I think they even do like the big signs on the interstate, the blue ones that say, you know, what restaurants and gas stations and everything, most people think the state does those, but, uh, they do not. But they still have to work with the state for permission, so those guys are very used to, uh, the rules and regulations of making sure things are in the right place.
Yeah, and it's been a long time coming just to get everything in order to even get to this point, so.
Gotcha.
Trying to get everything right now. Correct and make, you know, make sure you are.
Getting, getting lost. So, uh, council, uh, we would just need a motion to approve, uh, approve their placement, their workers to install on our right-of-way.
I do have a question, my only concern is, I'm all for this, my concern is, where do we stop with how much we put there? Is that intersection of thirteen?
In other words, you don't want a hundred and ten signs plastered up there?
Yes.
And I think, I would think that if, I would think that since this is a company that works with the state and it's, it's a very specific kind of sign, it's not, this isn't Pax themselves, you know, coming over and-
No, but I'm saying if there are fifty businesses in town and all fifty of them want to put a sign there, where do we stop with that?
I would think that if we got to something like that, we would, you know, you have a lot of communities that maybe have a, some kind of entry sign that, you know, the businesses can place themselves on, I think that would be an excellent option if we do get to that, that might be an option we want to look at doing anyway, just wondering what the businesses in town are doing, uh, because any, anything we can do to promote ourselves, uh, would be good, so, uh, the, the only good thing is, everybody would have to come before us with a presentation like this before anything would happen with it.
Very good thought, I think that it spurs conversation about wayfinding sign program, we've talked about that a little bit. Oksana has dealt with that before, uh, from a planning perspective and from an economic development perspective, so if you go to your neighbors, you see a bunch of wayfinding signs. This is, not that any, not that any business is unique over the other, but if we suddenly have fifty businesses on Main Street, we have different problems to deal with. We have good problems, but yeah, I, completely, it is a precedent, it's an interesting precedent in a sense, and that may spur on wayfinding language and keeping the intersections as clean as possible for, um, destination-type location businesses, so, yeah, great, great thought, something we need to be planning for.
Is there a grant, like a redevelopment grant possible?
Uh, unfortunately, we can't address or take questions from the audience, those are reserved for the public hearing sections. So, um, the, anybody else have any questions? Yes?
I do.
You did, Dex has a question.
What, um, Indot, they're sometimes tough, and they're, they're fine according to what you-
they're sometimes tough, and they're, they're fine according to what you've seen with sightlines, but I know it's in our, you know, say we own blacktop, you guys own everything else, and then a sign will be placed in that everything else, and they'll say, oh, by the way, you've impeded sightlines on our blacktop, and that's been taken care of.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and that's where Cory, I believe is his name, and that's kind of where the communication came with Jason, um, but to the point, it is one sign, um, when it gets to four or five, then the conversation, but, yeah, yeah.
All right. If no one else has any questions, we would entertain a motion to approve Indiana Logo Sign Group to place signs in our right of way for Paxverum.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Chad.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Very good, thank you, sir.
I will dispose if I had to. It's our responsibility to sound out, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, uh, so that finishes off unfinished business. Next, we have new business, uh, so the first item we have is, uh, the salary ordinance, um, so the salary ordinance is carryover from previous years with two changes, uh, the first change highlighted in red is some verbiage that was specific to the year twenty twenty-two, that is no longer necessary, so that it can come out. Uh, and then the, uh, next change is in the insurance section, uh, where it establishes, uh, the town supplying insurance for a full-time clerk treasurer. All other verbiage in there is, uh, as presented two years ago.
Was considered full-time clerk treasurer.
So, full-time clerk treasurer would be, uh, the, well, let's back up, the state requires a clerk treasurer to work eight hours a year. All right, uh, full-time clerk treasurer, which is what most communities have, is somebody that is in the building, normal office hours every week minus, uh, you know, vacation time every year, so, uh, forty-nine weeks a year and the number of hours required by our handbook to be full-time.
Trust me, I'll be there more than forty hours a week.
Right now, she's lucky if she's home forty hours a week. Uh, and then, uh, you have the attached exhibits, uh, the exhibits, uh, are the established pay grades for exhibit A, uh, exhibit B are the positions assigned to the pay grades, uh, exhibit C, look at me trying to do all this from memory, uh, exhibit C, I believe is our vacation policy. Almost there, so many pages, so yeah, exhibit A is our pay scales. Exhibit B, if I could see, it is the position assignments to pay grades. Fingers to it. Exhibit C is our vacation benefit schedule. Exhibit D are our town holidays for the year twenty twenty-four, both actual date and observed date. Uh, and then section, or exhibit E are the actual pay rates by position for the year twenty twenty-four. Uh, this reflects a three percent increase, uh, across the board for all town employees.
In our communication this morning, it was also noted that we added the school resource officer.
Yes.
Uh, what is the status of the school resource officer?
Uh, the school resource officer has a conditional offer of employment pending the approval of the memorandum of understanding between the town and the school. Uh, the, there was a meeting with, uh, the chief and the captain with, uh, Mr. Willis at the school corporation today, and I have been contacted by Mr. Willis for a follow-up, uh, to answer a few questions as to the budgetary cost of the officer.
That was going to be my next question, what have they come up with their share of the cost of that officer?
So, we have submitted what the cost of the officer is going to be and what their, their portion of that is going to be, so, uh, it's a seventy-nine, twenty-one split, uh, seventy-nine percent of the total cost of the officer, uh, goes to the school based on they will be working for the school seventy-nine percent of the year. The rest of the year they work for us, we pay twenty-one percent, so. So, right now, it is pending the approval by the school and school board, so I think they, they have just a couple of questions on those costs, uh, that they want to go over, and once they approve it, it will be, uh, good for us to proceed and that person will be hired. Any other questions? All right. At this time, we would entertain a motion to approve ordinance number nine dash twenty twenty-three to establish the salary ordinance for the year twenty twenty-four.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Chad.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
All right, and as this is time-sensitive for the year, uh, we will need, uh, we will entertain a motion to, uh, waive rules and approve this on the first read.
I will make the motion to suspend the rules to approve this motion, this ordinance.
I'll second, oh, we'll give that to Roger.
Gary.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes. All right, very good. Uh, next, uh, up is, uh, this is considering an ordinance regarding use of social media, internet, and adopting a comments policy for all town of Lappel social media sites, this would be resolution twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-three. So, uh, Dax, I would invite you to speak on this, uh.
For the group? Yeah.
And for the members of the gallery?
Not anything that I, I did not create this, it kind of was on the board, and so, but I've been through this before, uh, in my past life. And so, um, it's not censorship, uh, I know that there's some conversation going around that it is, it is not. Um, the members of the public have, have many opportunities to speak to the council. Unfortunately, social media has become a place of, uh, most times, lack of decorum and professionalism, and we have to be careful of that, so, uh, that's why you put policies in place like these policies, there are some places that have, uh, town sanctioned social media sites where there is no commenting at all. Um, it's mainly just, I think you have stated it's for informational purposes only.
Yeah.
It's not a public forum.
It's a government communication.
It's a government communication, uh, device that, that gives us the opportunity to give as much information as possible to the public, so that the public can then do, really, the preferred method is these three methods. If you have an issue with what you see, email, send an email, all their email addresses, I believe, are now on the website.
Believe so?
It used to be an info thing, now I believe their email addresses are on the website, if they're not, they won't be there very soon. Um, a phone call, uh, all five of these humans have town-issued cell phones, which they understand, they are not, well, you do, it's just sitting at the office, you haven't picked it up yet, okay? But you all have town-issued cell phones, and I'm sure that those numbers can be made public, that's how it is at most of the other places that I work with, that those town-issued cellphone numbers, that they know they're not supposed to use that public property for private use, so it's strictly just for public use. Um, so if a, a phone call or a phone call into the office, take a message, message is left, town council member can deal with it there, or here at the public comment section of the meeting, or if it's a public hearing, or, uh, very similar to the reason that we had a couple of months ago, the council, uh, presiding chair, if they so choose to do their policies and procedures, can change things up and allow additional public comment, uh, during those very controversial or, or different items during the meeting, to, to preserve a sense of professionalism and decorum, we can't just walk into the state legislature and just walk onto the floor and start talking, we'd, we'd get taken out in, in, uh, some special bracelets and sent a couple of blocks down the street, so, you have to have a sense of decorum to run the people's business, and this is just one of those, um, policies that you've put in place to, to have that sense of decorum, keep it as civil as you possibly can, we've lost civility in this country, so, this is just one of those items, so.
Uh, so, in, in, in all that being said, again, there, there's so many opportunities to contact us, and the, the one thing that I would caution, uh, uh, everybody or advise, uh, you know, all of us up here on this board have full-time jobs during the day. Uh, I know I'll get in trouble at work if I do town business while I'm at work, uh, it's, it's a no-no to, just like, uh, state employees can't do private work while they're getting paid by the state, we, I, I can't do state work or town work while I'm getting paid by my boss. Uh, so, please be respectful, if you do call them our cell phones, that if it's during the day, we may not answer, uh, but we'll get back to you. So.
And there are, there is voicemail on them.
And there is voicemail, yeah.
Very well stated.
Um, okay, so, uh, resolution twenty-seven, uh, dash twenty twenty-three, uh, basically states that, uh, to better inform the public as to upcoming events and official action taken by various town agencies, boards, the town of Lappel, and through the Lappel Town Council, uh, establishes and maintains various online social media sites, and whereas the council deems these sites an excellent opportunity for citizens to communicate concerns or to provide feedback relating to the town government, and to, whereas, to properly balance the town's desire for a productive public forum and free speech considerations, the county, or the council deems it desirable to establish a policy for the regulation of comments made on town-regulated social media sites and pages. Whereas, the council deems it desirable to adopt the attached comments policy, exhibit A, uh, which will be enforced by, and we haven't named the person yet that will be responsible for that. Um, and the list of, uh, the exhibit, we have the right to remove any, uh, material that contains anything obscene, vulgar, or socially explicit, is spam, advocates or depicts illegal activity targets, or disparages any ethnic, racial, religious, gender, or other type of group, contains personal attacks of any kind, promotes private businesses, ventures, services, or products, campaigns for public office, or promotes a political organization or candidate, infringes on copyrights or trademarks, jeopardizes the safety of personnel in the conduct of operations or investigations, or is off-topic. So, uh, we're not required to read all that information as it is posted online, uh, but I just wanted to make sure that we, we covered it for everybody here, if you hadn't seen it, to know, uh, what in the world it is we're talking about, so.
So to be clear, comments are still open. They are not turned off. Right?
And, and one of the things, I know there's been debate, because we have, uh, because of some things starting to go sideways on comments, we have had, uh, comments turned off on posts recently, that, uh, because we don't have a policy in place, um, this policy is to regulate that, to where comments will be turned on in the understanding that if, uh, somebody starts, for lack of a better term, a flame war or something like that online, uh, we have the right to go through and, and keep it on topic and respectful, so.
And this is not the chatter page?
No, this is.
That is not a town sanctioned group?
Yeah. Uh, everyone's always welcome to take what we post, share it on their page, and then comment as you wish, you know, that's the beauty of the free speech. Uh, it's just, this is the town site, and we respect to keep it respectful, so. Anybody on the council have questions, comments, or concerns?
I think we should leave the comments turned off, personally, but.
That's kind of where I'm at.
I think it's an informational website.
Information was not necessarily a forum, it's just to get information out, you know?
But if, but I think we should have this policy, so if we do need, like, there was, if we change our mind and put comments, allow comments, then we've already got this in place.
That's why I asked the question of our comments on, it's probably always better that they're not. That's informational only, but that's why I asked the question, right?
And, and if, if somebody's questioning why we would turn off the comments on a post, very much like here, uh, unless it's a public comment section of the meeting, you guys don't get the opportunity to, to chime in and throw in your two cents worth, you know, that's, that's not how the rules work. So, having that opportunity to comment on, uh, a post is kind of the same thing, it's, it's a, it's, it, it's not a, like, fair, I don't know if fair is the right word for it, but it's, it's not a, a fair representation, if you couldn't stand up and say those things in our meeting, then you shouldn't be able to make the comment on Facebook ultimately, i- is one way to look at that, so.
Not on Facebook, on.
Or on the social media or whatever, uh, interwebs forum we have for that. Uh, so, uh, again, this is something that, uh, this is the first time we've presented it, uh, if we have the opportunity, you know, if somebody feels good about it and they want to make the motion to pass it at this meeting, uh, we can entertain a motion uh, to approve the resolution, uh, if the motion doesn't carry, uh, then it doesn't carry, if it, uh, if it does, it does. So, at this time, we would open it to council comment or entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-three. Do we decide if the comments turned off, correct? Well, no, we would, we would have to, we'll have to create a policy, because at the end of the day, we as a council, want to make sure that we are establishing a consistent method. So, right now, we don't have a policy that says necessarily the comments are turned off, uh, so it might be an amendment to this or a different resolution altogether. I just know the current vice president always comes up with it. Yeah.
I'll make the motion for resolution number twenty-seven.
Dash twenty twenty-three.
Dash twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Oh, should we have a second?
Chad.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
All right. Okay, uh, next, we have discuss an update to the bad check credit card policy.
That would be, we have a policy, uh, for people who write bad checks for their utilities, it's a fifty-dollar fee. I would like for you guys to think about doing that for credit cards as well, I had one customer, their credit card came back three times in one month. It's actually just as difficult to fix when it co, when a credit card doesn't go through as it is if a check doesn't go through. So, if you guys would consider it, uh, maybe I'll have a legal draw-up, uh, resolution for you guys, maybe we'll get it to you for the next meeting.
Uh, is that something that, as we're, uh, I know we've started discussions, excuse me, on our, uh, our fee schedules and everything, that we would probably prefer to just work in with all of that? That way, we have one, one document that controls all that.
One ordinance, its fees and fines.
All right, uh, next, uh, discuss the town council policies and procedural, procedure manuals. Uh, all of you should have received a lovely, uh, booklet, uh, from Dax today, containing thirty-four of the most exciting pages of documentation you're ever going to see in your life, and, uh, I will let Dax discuss, uh, this with everyone. And I will let Dax discuss this with everyone. So Dax, I turn it over to you.
Well, this is on the site, website, people see. It is a working draft, it's nowhere near, nowhere near ready for you to, I don't think it's anywhere near ready for you to do anything with. And so, you know, it starts with your basic who you are, what you're supposed to do, what you do as a council, what your responsibilities are, the budget is a big one. Obviously, spending the taxpayer's dollars is very important. And then it goes to your organization as the council, council president, vice president. The executives of the council really have no other powers, other than appointment powers. They have the same voting rights and powers as anybody else on the council. What they do get is more work for not more pay, I believe, unless your council president makes a little bit more money. They are representing Chad at this point as president, would represent the town in any spoken manner. So it's, you know, that would be really section one. I think council values is on here. High energy, open-minded, have respect for each other, be straightforward, no hidden agendas, maintain humor, traditions are respected but not binding, I love that. Then it kind of goes through Chapter 3, Staff Administration Support, how the staff works with the council. I think there are a couple of important things in here that no one member of the council should be going to one member of the staff telling them what to do. Because what happens is if all of a sudden they have five directives from five different people, you have chaos. That is one of the main policies and procedures when you're talking about how you deal with staff. Chapter 3 is really talking about how the staff and administrators give you support, agenda creation, printing out resolutions, getting you booklets like the booklet you have now. You know, email, setting up meetings on calendars and things like that, setting up the meeting rooms, ensuring mail and deliveries to you gets to you as you would. Chapter 4 is really financial. I think one thing missing in Chapter 4 that's in most Chapter 4s of these documents in financial matters is the, if you have a town vehicle, which none of you do, but if you did, don't use it for private purposes. If you have a town cellphone, don't ever use it for private purposes. It is a, it is misconduct. If the town has an extension ladder at the utility department and you think you want to use that extension ladder, don't, okay? Those are not for private use, those are for public use. So that could be added in here. Your purchasing policy is in here, I didn't know what dollar figures to put in there, we can do that. What else? That's pretty much the financial policy. Also conflicts of interest, which I think are coming up. Then you have communications, which we think is very important. We just talked about communication a little bit. This is really talking about correspondence from council members to the rest of the public. You speak as a council. If you vote against a resolution or an ordinance, you can say, I voted against it, but the council approved it as a majority. You don't, you don't blast, landblast fellow council members for not voting with you. You speak as a council when you are speaking in the public. When you speak for the town, you do the same thing. You speak as a council on behalf or for the town, with state matters, national matters, you're trying to sell yourself. Roles and department liaisons. So there's a big section here on department liaisons. It's not just board commission liaisons, department liaisons as well. I've placed in here Parks and Recreation, Utilities, Public Safety, Planning and Zoning, Town Administration, Economic Development, Redevelopment. If you'd like to add anything, please do so. And then how and when you are appointed as liaisons to those boards and those departments, which typically would be when you do your organizational meeting at the first of the year, which you just did your organizational stuff by voting on your officers because you can now, but I would suggest first of the year those liaisons are chosen for the remainder of the year. Proclamations, it talks about state legislation. Conflict of interest, which Theresa and I talked about today, annually, they have to issue their conflict of interest statement and their nepotism statement. We will need to do that at the next meeting, so that they have that all taken care of. Make sure that you fill it out thoroughly and everything that might be a conflict that you take care of that. It's very, very important. Interaction with town staff and officials is Chapter 7. I won't go through the whole thing, I think it's pretty self-explanatory as to how you interact with those officials, I kind of just brought it up a little bit. There's a town council, town attorney relationship, and we have to keep him in line. And then I think the most important thing in this document is, completely Chapter 8. That's really where we get into decorum and professionalism, how we interact with the public. Meeting schedule, your special meetings and workshops are on there, and who calls those? Special meetings and workshops may be called by the council president or by two members of the town council, would be part of your policy. All regular meetings, public comments will be permitted in accordance with these rules and procedures. Notice requirements shall follow state statute, just to let everybody know, public hearings have different requirements on the amount of days in which it has to be published in a newspaper. Some are 14, some are 10, some are 30, just depends on the item. Public hearing notices must be published. The public notice of this particular meeting tonight, just the meeting, does not have to be published, it has to be sent to the media. Herald Bulletin, I think the Elwood paper as well, those are some of the others. 48 hours, within 48 hours notice, not including holidays and not including weekends. That notice must be posted as well. Agendas, agendas are not required for a town council meeting by state law. If they do produce an agenda, they must provide it to you all. If you, if the public requests one, they are sitting over there on the podium, and they are, they are online. Now they're interactive, so basically they're a whole packet that the council sees, you can click a button and see it as well. The meeting agenda is set by the council president, but also by all of the council members as a whole. Ordinance is introduced by title on such a given matter only unless a council member requests that the ordinance or resolution be read in its entirety. Ordinances are introduced at one council meeting, have a final reading at a subsequent council meeting unless there is unanimous consent to suspend the rules. That's in there. Other items, other business items to be voted on, that are not on the agenda may be added to the agenda if four of the five council members agree. Less than four members are present, the item may only be added if there's unanimous consent. So then agenda order of business. Recall the order, your public comments and concerns, there is no language of statute that requires a council to set aside time during a council meeting for the public to speak, unless there's a properly noted public hearing on the agenda. Public hearing is essentially a separate meeting within the council meeting, as required by statute for certain actions by the council. Shall be the policy of the Lapel Town Council to set aside time during council meetings to open the floor for comments from the public on items not included on the present town council agenda. Individuals desiring to speak are asked to fill out a public request to speak form. One member of the public at a time should be invited by the council president or designated presiding officer to the podium to speak. Following this invitation, the member of the public requesting the floor shall provide their name and be given the floor for a period of three to five minutes. I, as a consultant, am not a fan of giving your address. Nobody in this room should have to know where you live. Not a fan of giving address at all. I think some communities do that because they want people from their community to be allowed in the podium to speak, but if you have somebody from, you know, Portage here, who just happened upon Lapel one night, who wants to say something, so beat it, they may have something to add. So I'm not a big fan of the whole give your address, it's not required by anything. And in this current climate that we live in, privacy laws are, I know they can find you by your name, but giving it out just helps them. Comments should focus on a specific matter within the council's jurisdiction with reasons for the position taken. As a rule, the council will not accept video testimony. Videos may accompany in-person testimony but are subject to speaking time limits. Showed videos prior approval must be received. Presentations is on, is an agenda item as well. I think we all know what those are, I shouldn't have to tell you what they are. Clerk Treasurers report consent agenda. It is a widely, becoming a widely used tool in local government. Consent agenda is basically this. Resolutions, meaning minutes, sometimes the claims go on a consent agenda. Proclamations, the council would give somebody that needs a proclamation. Resolutions requesting the Indiana State Legislature to do something. Expenditures exceeding the certain amount that a department head can approve, but the council must approve. Those expenses can go on a consent agenda. Darn near anything except an ordinance can go on the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is basically this. It is a long list of items that the council will vote on at one time. It will not run through the entire list. It will save time. Consent agendas are good if we're following our rules of posting all of the materials in their packet online for the public to see at least seven days ahead of time. We will make sure that we start to do that. We did it, I think this, I think this time we did it four days ahead of time. We're getting there.
We're getting better.
We're getting better. Seven-day rule is something that we really want to stick to. So that is the consent agenda. If one member of the council wants to pull an item out of the consent agenda, that item will be pulled out and placed either under unfinished business or new business. It does not have to be a vote, it can be just one member that says, I want to pull that out and have an actual discussion on that item of consent. So consent is becoming a much more widely used tool. Let's see. I have a list of types of items that can be in consent agenda. Meaning memoranda. State public access counselor laws say that we must have a memoranda kept of the meeting. Memoranda is not a detailed novel of every speech, every word that happened in the council meeting. Although this nifty little camera, right now, is transcribing this meeting. That will make it a whole lot easier for the clerk and her office, with her, it's really her job, unfortunately, to try to get all these meetings done, to do the memoranda. And we'll do, we'll do a better job of getting them done and post the approved memoranda on the website for everyone to see and to look at. Another thing we'd like to do is take this video and place it on the website, although I'm afraid our current website is not going to be adequate for that, so council, we're going to be talking about a new one fairly soon, one that's much more easy for the, right now, I had to, I told you all that emails and phone numbers are on the website, but I had to sit here for more than three clicks to find where that was. And that should not, that should not happen. So we're going to work really hard to make it as easy as possible for the website to be the main source of information, for it to be easy to navigate. So that's going to be something that's worked on very hard. Public hearings, we just had one, so I said certain legislative, certain legislative actions must be done by public hearing. We just went through that process. Council, I think you know how that works. Unfinished business will be on agenda, those are all the items that they've already discussed before. An item labeled considered designates that the town council is ready to move forward with a request for a motion to approve, deny, or table. Consideration items will be accompanied by all supporting documents, including ordinance or resolution. An item labeled discuss or discussion designates that the town council would like to brainstorm, ask experts, collectively discuss an idea or proposal, but the idea, item is an idea stage only. I believe this document is in discuss stage on the agenda, if I'm correct.
Discuss, yes.
Yes. An item designated discuss or discussion will often not be accompanied by any supporting material, and the council shall not take a vote, if that be their policy. I'm just saying this is if you pass this policy. New business is pretty self-explanatory. Department reports, we have suggested that department reports be written, submitted, and a link to the website. Chief, thank you very much, you're doing a very good job. We can work with everybody else on getting those, so that when it comes time for department reports, like I am rambling on now and taking up all your time, that won't necessarily take place unless a council member desires to ask that department leader something about the written report that they have received, or that department leader wants to have a further discussion about an item when they are given the floor by the presiding chair to discuss their report. Claims, that's pretty easy. If they're removed out of the consent agenda, if that's where they choose to put them, then, then, you know, obviously further discussion to be had, or claims will be moved down as an actual agenda item. Upcoming meetings, we'll list the upcoming meetings on there, and then I don't have to say what adjourn is. Although there is a myth that there must be a vote taken to adjourn, that's not necessarily the case in Roberts rules. You don't necessarily have to have a motion and a second and a vote to adjourn. The presiding chair can do that if the presiding chair wishes. General procedures, presiding officer, council president, seating arrangement, if there so chooses to be one, it's funny, they'll choose their own seating arrangement and be there for the rest of their lives, whether they like it or not, they kind of choose. Signing of town documents, we have them right here. Quorum is three-fifths of the council. Discussion rules, and this is probably the most important item in this document, to maintain professionalism, maintain decorum in this room, to maintain a sense of organization, and minimize chaos in this meeting, because this meeting is for them as representatives. We live in a representative republic, we don't necessarily have democracy, true democracy. They are representing you and they're your voice, and they have this meeting to get that job done. They want it to be as chaos-free as possible. Obtaining the floor is up to the presiding officer to give the floor. That disappoints the president. Once a member of the public or staff or council has been recognized by the presiding chair and obtained the floor, there shall be no interruptions unless predetermined time limit has expired and/or the chair withdraws a recognition to obtain the floor. Members of the public that have been recognized by the presiding chair must approach the podium and state their name. Prior to addressing the council, comments and questions should be limited to the issue before the council. Cross-exchange between council and members of the public should be avoided. That's them speaking to you from this dais into the crowd. Please note, it's not a requirement of statute or Roberts rules, where the council must open the floor to the public during a regular meeting of the town council. Shall be the policy of the Lapel Town Council, however, that is a section of the town council agenda, shall be included for certain open public comments and that the town council may consider, including a designated time to open the floor to public comment on certain policy considerations. This public comment time may include time limits, that shall be set by the council. This decision shall be made by a majority vote, the town council is strictly at the town council's discretion. Questions to staff, a council member shall, after recognition by the council president, address questions to the department head or designated staff member. If a council member has questions on an agenda item, that member should contact staff prior to the meeting to allow staff time to respond to the answer for the meeting. Interruptions, once recognized, the council member is considered to have the floor, and another council member may not interrupt the speaker except to make a point of order or a point of personal privilege. In such circumstances, the council member holding the floor shall cease speaking until the point of order or privilege is resolved. Upon being recognized by the council president, members of the staff shall hold the floor until completion of their remarks until recognition is withdrawn by the council president. Discussion limit, a council member should not speak more than once on a particular subject until every other council member has had the opportunity to speak. Council members are encouraged to discuss items during the discussion-making process and may ask staff to respond inappropriately. Council president should allow other members to speak first and then give his or her views and summarize. Tabling an item immediately stops discussion and causes a vote to postpone a matter indefinitely or to a time and date certain. Right of protest, the council member is never required to state reasons for a dissenting vote. Calling the question, the purpose of calling the question is to disallow further debate but an issue to an immediate vote. Council member may move to call the question on an item which is being considered. The motion requires a second, is not debatable, and must pass by a four-fifth vote. If motion carries, items are no longer debatable and the town council must move on. Other protocol, these are, you know, work to preserve appropriate order. Any one second. Discourage side conversations, disruptions, interruption, or delaying efforts. Inform council president when departing from a meeting. Limit disruptive behavior. Persons demonstrating rude, boisterous, or profane behavior will be called to order by the council president. Such conduct continues, the council president may call a recess. Request the removal of such persons from the council chambers, adjourn the meeting, or take such appropriate action. Council has adopted a policy to discourage applause, booing, or other similar behaviors from the public during meetings. Recognize that the only town council staff, advisory body chairs, or designated representatives and those authorized by the presiding officer shall be permitted to sit at the council or staff tables. Limit breaks to five to 10 minutes. Impose time limits on speakers. Enforcement of order, the police chief or his designated access sergeant barbs. Any council member may request the presiding officer to enforce the rules of protocol. Upon motion and vote, majority vote, the presiding officer will be required to do so. Values of respect, I think we already talked about that. Voting procedures, I think you all know what those are. Abstentions, the council member must declare his or her intention to abstain from a vote prior to the presiding officer beginning the roll call for a vote. Abstention is not really a vote. In the event of a tie, the clerk treasurer has the breaking tie vote on most things, but not all things, correct? Motions and reconsiderations, notification of advertising, the development of agendas in here. General parliamentary procedures for early administration of a council meeting. Presiding chair is in control. No member of the council staff, consultant of the public, has the right to speak until recognized. No member of the council staff, consultant of the public, has the right to speak until recognized by the chair. Speaking from the gallery without an invitation or recognition by the presiding chair is prohibited. Town council members conversing with the public in the gallery is prohibited. Town council members, that's, that's, there it is. There's the May, it stays off until oblivion.
Just May.
Just May.
Just May. Town council, May.
It's May.
We don't make it to June.
There it is. It's May. Then it talks about setting aside time for public comment, public request to speak. Procedure to consider an ordinance, we just went through that. I don't think I need to tell you what that is. It was really controlled by state law. I think that's it. Thirty-four pages, y'all.
Like I said. So, and for the public benefit, part of what you see going on before you is an evolution, all right? For a very long time, the, the council has operated within the guidelines of the law, but without the structure necessary to, to, to keep it up. You know, you see things that, you know, we've changed the way that we set up the room for the meetings. You see a little more presentation having all the tablecloths out. You see the goofy owl camera up here in front of you that is currently broadcasting this entire room from that one device. If you're watching it online, you'll notice, depending on who's speaking, it will follow that person. It'll split it to a multi-screen. So I've got the fancy little gavel up here now for calling things to order, you know, because that's what professional organizations do when they have a board. So I think I've used it twice. But it, it's all in an effort to professionalize us as a council, to make us more efficient and to become more transparent. You know, this book and when the final draft of it is approved and it becomes official, you know, this is a great tool for the community so that you know, if I'm at a meeting, this is how it should work. This is how, this is when my opportunity is to speak. This is how we should conduct ourselves and this is how, you know, if you question the procedure on something, what you should know to expect as far as the opportunity to speak or how we vote or like you saw demonstrated here tonight, a couple of, you know, waiving the rules to approve on a first reading. All of that stuff is in here and it's great because if you take somebody that's been on the council off and on for years, like a Gary, who can probably, you know, do this in his sleep, and you have Roger, who this is his second meeting. This is a great tool for Roger so that Roger knows what in the world's going on or any new person that comes on to the council. So it's, it's, like I said, it's all in an effort to make us better and more efficient in how we conduct ourselves and how we run the town.
A couple of notes. If you think this is a brand-new document from scratch, it's not. I think it has a little bit of Avon in it. I think it has a little bit of Noblesville in it. I think it has a little bit of, can't remember who else. I think it has a little bit of Cicero in it. I think it's so, what I'm trying to say is, Lappel is not recreating the wheel here. There are other documents like this which set in motion professional council conduct, professional council roles and responsibilities, other than Lappel. So it's not like they're trying to do something that has not been done. I think I mentioned the big one. I, I can't, on next Monday, Monday after New Year's, which the legislature will be open, I can't walk from my office and walk down on the floor and tell the speaker that I think he's not very smart for not allowing a bill because I'll probably end up, like I said, across the river into a brand-new looking building which I don't want to be in. Same rule applies, really, for, for things to get done. So this is not, this is, in, in this world, we, you know, we kind of borrow and... Pendleton, as a matter of fact, one day said, "Hey, you all, you all can borrow our building standards." Borrow meaning just take them because they're good. And so that's kind of what this is and it's a mixture of many. There is some new language in there as well, kind of specific to you all and, but nothing new. It's working document. There are plenty of typos and grammatical problems, so don't yell at me. There are sentences that just trail off into oblivion at this point.
Page twenty-nine.
Page twenty-nine, but that's why it says working draft. And like I said, there is a link to this on the town council website. And we'll do our darndest, I promise, to get that thing changed so it's easier to navigate. We will be getting speakers. There is already wireless mics ordered. There is already a P A system with those wireless mics. Those are kind of pointless if you have no speaker system, so.
That's why they're not here.
The next item up for bids is a good speaker system so you all can hear us. I don't think there's any intentional hiding or secrecy or anything because somebody's quiet. We want, we want to be loud, as loud as we can for you all to hear the council. So that's coming, that's forthcoming. These meetings being uploaded to the website for people to see visually. That's going to be required on July first, 2025, anyway. So we might as well get a head start. I think I've probably rambled long enough into the football game now, whatever's on tonight. Whoever I use listening, listening to today, sorry. Switzerland.
It's Purdue. Purdue's playing.
One comment.
Yes.
Some of the folks that are here in the audience and some that are up here will agree with me. I believe that we should have had this probably back in 2005, this document, for helping those councils, which I was as bad as anyone about it, to conduct those bit, those meetings more professionally, even way back then. Correct? So that, I think this is going to work out really well, this document.
Obviously, if anybody has anything that they'd like to see added, changed, or discussed, you know, email Dax any of your comments or concerns. And then, you know, I'm sure at some point we'll have a working session to go through and discuss.
If you remember, there was, in the, just to bring it up, the L K Q rezone, there ended up being public comment. It was count, it was motion second and then an opening of the floor to the public for limited speaking time. But the floor was open and did not have to be. That was staff, me. I sent kind of an email and said, "Hey, you know, you probably should do this. This would be a good thing to do. You don't have to, it's not required. The public hearing's already happened on the plan commission level." The discretion of the council and the council that night did open that up during that time for the public. So that's where I mean why the council has discretion in certain items to open their floor for additional conver, comment conversation if they would like to do so. And staff can drive that a lot in advice to you all on what some of those items should be. That's all.
We can always do more, but we can't do less.
Correct.
All right. Next item on the new business is consider appointments to boards and commissions. I believe we have some folks that have submitted interest in joining our planning and we have a few others, maybe, or just planning.
Two names for planning and Jessica Tharp and Amy Egley.
Two employees, two that have...
So let me, there is a board and commission portal coming. This poor website's going to explode. To the website where you can, and the, the form is already done, it's just got to get on the site. But for now, council, right now, what you have going on, I talked to Oxon today. On the plan commission, for instance, Matt Wood, his term expires on twelve thirty-one twenty-five. Andrea Baldwin, her term expires twelve thirty-one twenty-two six. Every, all four members of the public citizens on a plan commission are appointed by the council president. The three members that are town officials or town employee members are appointed by the council as a whole and their terms are basically added to an item. So they can end when they leave or they can end at the year. They can end when the council determines that that employee needs to go off the plan commission and add it back on. Right now, you have...
As if they serve at the pleasure.
They serve at the pleasure of the council.
Correct.
You have two open, you have two members that are, and their, their terms are expiring. So you have two open citizen member seats on the plan commission. There is a rule that no more than two members of the plan commission can be from the same political party. Unless...
Just real quick caveat, that does not require a citizen member to join a political party. So that was, that was...
So if they're independent or non...
Correct. Right now, Matt and Andrea both have stated that they are members of the Republican Party. So these next two cannot necessarily state that they are members of the Republican Party. In Indiana, we do not register as Republicans or Democrats.
That's decided in the primary.
It's a closed primary. You get to, you get to say that when you walk up to the booth. You don't have to register and say, "I'm a Republican or a Democrat."
A lot of people don't understand that.
Yeah, a lot of people don't. Anyway, that's what you have happening now. You have two vacant town employee seats. You don't have a lot of town employees, however.
Two that have offered to join, Brandon Hutchinson and Chris Higginbotham have offered to go on to the planning if you so wish to appoint them.
And are both of them residents of the town or...
They don't have to be.
Oh, they don't have to be?
No.
Oh, that's exciting.
Oh, yeah, if they're an employee, they, they don't have to.
That's exciting. See, I learned something today. Well, I guess we as a council can put to a vote the two open employee positions for Brandon and Chris. Do we want to vote on that together or separately? I'm going to say entertain a motion to appoint Brandon Hutchinson and Chris Higginbotham to the two vacant town employee seats on the planning commission.
I'll make the motion in a second.
Make a motion in a second?
Who made the motion?
Sorry.
It was me, Teresa.
You did. Thank you. Yes, he does live in the town.
Okay.
Got to have to.
Uh, Chad.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Uncie.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Teresa's voice only signed up twenty-eight thirty. All right, so that takes care of those two. So we have two individuals here. We have Amy Egley, who has expressed interest. Going through here and looking for the important part, the declaration of party, if they made it.
Amy has been a trooper and has been on, viewing us on the Teams meeting, but she couldn't make air tonight, so. She is watching.
Hi, Amy.
She cannot respond.
All right, there's Amy's information. Hey! The owl has spoken. From what I see in the two letters that have been presented to us, I see no definition of party affiliation.
Could they appoint pending review? Could appoint pending review?
And if, in the review, how many more Republicans are we allowed?
None. Oh, there is one other requested. Gary Valentine.
Or Greg.
Greg, sorry. I knew that, yes. I, I know Greg. Greg Valentine, who's, he brought something into the office late today, but I'm, I'm assuming we know his political party affiliation? Maybe we don't?
Yes. He is, he is Republican with, and he is currently the Green Township trustee, so. With his party af, well, with his party affiliation, we can't.
Oh, yeah.
I have a question. I don't know if you can hear me. Do you need me to resubmit a letter that states that I am independent?
Yeah, sorry, Amy. We actually cannot discuss that with you right now. You submitted your letter.
Oh, okay.
So appreciate it. All right. So as legal counsel has advised, we can vote to appoint these two individuals to, to the planning commission. Oh, I appoint? That's exciting, okay. Well, everybody's been coming forward. Well, at this point, I would, pending review, I would like to appoint Amy Egley and Jessica Tharp to the planning commission, pending review.
Did you make that motion?
No, it's not a motion. Apparently, I can, I get to make the, it's one of my, one of my powers, apparently.
And let's speak to that real quick. There are a lot of councils who, even though the council executive has appointment power, that that council executive will seek ratification or blessing of the full council. I'm not saying you need to do that, but it is the policy of some councils. Just bring, just throwing that up.
It's in, it's thirty-six, seven, four, two, oh, seven, B, which you, the town falls under subsection two. The municipal, municipal executive shall appoint four citizen members, of whom no more than two may be from the same political party.
All right. No pressure. No pressure. Oh, there we go. That's that. Did we have any for any other boards or commissions this evening? No? Okay.
Well, I do want to mention, like I mentioned to you in R D C, the R D C has one-year appointments. Three of those are appointed by the council executive. Two of them are appointed by the council. I think you have three members now who are probably wanting to, to continue on. So anyway, once we get to the new year, we'll have to, you'll have to, your first meeting, probably reappoint the redevelopment commission. Then we have some B Z A, we'll have some B Z A appointments. We don't have to do that tonight and then we'll look at the park board. So you'll see a chart. I have a chart made for you all. Shows member, who they were appointed by, their term, political party affiliation, if that's required. You will see that. And once we get the bandwidth together to get on the website, the public will see that as well.
And of course, if anyone knows anyone that is interested in serving on any of those boards or commissions, please have them contact us and throw their name in the hat.
Do we have deadlines?
There is no deadline?
Well...
Well, we'd have, if we don't have enough members, we can't have meetings. So, so, all right. We will, we will post something on Facebook concerning that. Okay. All right. Next, we have a discuss planning fee structure reorganization. Who is speaking on that topic? Miss Hutton?
Good evening. So I have been working as your planner for the past half year. You mostly see me, you know, reviewing applications, bringing them here. But one other thing that I do is I'm just, just also trying to professionalize the planning parts of Lappel. And as I've been working here, I noticed that there are a few places where planning fees could be improved. It's not a, you know, complete revamp. And so today, I just wanted to bring these ideas up, right? So this is just going to be me bringing up the idea first for you to think about, for you to give me maybe some feedback, maybe you had some questions if you had a chance to look at some of the fees that I proposed. But the main goals and the main things that I wanted to improve were, one, there are a couple of types of applications that the zoning ordinance mentions, but there is not a specific application for it and thus there is no fee for it sometimes. So some of those were added. Some things, sometimes I just, a general practice, planning, for example, having a fee for a waiver for subdivisions where any time... planning, for example, having a fee for a waiver for subdivisions where any time an applicant would like to waive a regulation, there is a fee to consider that waiver, because every time you have, you know, one rule that they want to waive, another rule, another rule, that's an additional work for staff and then for all of us to, you know, have time to review. So there is a fee for that. And so, and, and just in general, fees are meant to defray the administrative cost of the review, so of the staff, any consultants that you bring, that you have to pay then, you know, for their work. And so the fees that I sent to you all, kind of keep that in mind, that they are meant to cover the cost of the majority of the review. I also sent a chart comparing the current and proposed LaPelle fees to the fees for a few communities around. Pendleton, Madison County, Orville, and McOrville. The fees sometimes are different, and you will see that sometimes they are, sometimes they're similar. The overall thing is that LaPelle's fees are generally, pretty much everywhere are a lot lower, which means that if you don't charge, you know, a higher fee, your budget is not covering the sta- the staff's work. And so my proposal is to increase at least the fee so that you can cover some of the staff's work. I tried to propose the fees that still stay, you know, relatively, you know, on par, maybe sometimes cheaper than in other communities, just because it's a smaller community. I'm not sure, you know, how people would respond to these fees. Anytime it's a big developer, obviously, you know, they are more likely to be able to pay the fee, and you know, if you would want to have it higher even than I proposed, that's always an option as well. But regarding some other applications, you know, within the community, I would want to hear your feedback on that. So that's just kind of my, my general idea behind this proposal. And today, just wanting to hear if you have any initial kind of thoughts or opinions or questions for me to keep maybe researching, you know, improving on before we start turning this into an actual, you know, ordinance proposal and official review of these.
Do you think some of these are enough?
I would guess that a lot of the fees, some of them would be maybe enough to cover some of the reviews, maybe not all of them. If you had more of a staff person that was hired, that let's say, let's say you have more of a variance of development standards, like a smaller type of review that doesn't require as much of a professional review, and it's staff reviewed it that is, you know, hired and more like a, how do I explain this? Right now I'm doing pretty much administrative work, starter planner, senior planner, and director, right? So the fee that is paid for my work is kind of like averaging all of the types of jobs, you know, down the plan. Planning fees sometimes need to defray the cost of the planner that would be reviewing the application. So for example, sometimes if it's a smaller kind of review, it could be a smaller fee. If it requires more professional fee, you know, it should be a little higher. When I was proposing the fees to be more consistent with the community, that was my way of at least equalizing it to what maybe, you know, the salaries and things are, just because also people will be asking, why am I paying a lot more? I know that LaPelle situation is different because right now, you know, planning is done by me and I'm an independent consultant. Sometimes we have to get engineers involved that are also independent consultants for different topics, they have different fees. And so it's a little hard to come up with a fee that would completely cover all costs. The engineering solution, by the way, is the one that I'm proposing, which is slightly different than what you have. For one type of development, you have a one point of five multiplied by the rate of consultant. Different consultants are paid differently. A lot of them will submit, or if they're worked, wait past the time that the review already happened and the approval happened while the applicant has it unpaid. So my proposal to this is have an application fee where at least the administrative staff is already paid for their work, starting to process it, as well as the planner review fee based on a table that shows number of pages of the construction plans and the fee to review them. That's something that the Noble Skills Engineering Department uses, where that's kind of how they charge for the engineering parts of the review of construction plans. Those are typically usually higher level of review, needs an engineer that needs to be paid more. And so my proposal is to create this table so that also the applicant pays the fee upfront at the beginning of the application, like they would for any other application. So that's my proposal to cover, you know, the majority of the review and as much of it as possible.
Because as we have seen.
And, and you know, also because I usually just do the work, I don't even see any budget on my side there. It, it would be hard for me to estimate what, what is that?
Right.
Fee to, to cover everything, so at this point, this is just my way of at least increasing your ability to pay the consultants and as well as, you know, have the charge base comparable to the rest of the communities.
This goes in line with, obviously, we discussed again, all of our fees in town reviewed into a document, that they're all in one place and consistent. It'll be much easier to review them in the future if there are changes. And this brings us more in line, as we've discussed over time, where, you know, we're several years behind where other communities have been. And this is just helping bring us current with the, the rest of the world. You know, and, and if, if you look through these, there's, there's, there's nothing that's outrageous that would stop a development from coming into town also. You know, obviously, we, we're, we're not trying to create an exclusive club for only certain people, so not my Montana. If anybody's ever looked at moving to Montana, very costly, move to Wyoming. But it, 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 it still welcomes people to come in and help support the town and help support the growth, so.
Well, and as we've seen in recent events, it's going to take a lot more planning and review than what building a house on the law here in LaPelle was for many years.
Alright. Thank you, Oksana. That would be another one of those things that we look at in a workshop or other meeting. Alright, next up, thank you, Oksana. Department reports, police department chief. And we apologize, Kelly did get his reports in in time, they just did not get linked on the document.
So I'll just give you just a, if I can figure out how to use my smartphone, because I'm not smart. A brief overview of what we did. So as normal, just go over the quick calls for this, the last month. So the last month, we took four hundred and three calls per service. We filed sixteen criminal charges. We had eleven instances where we had a flock hit that we took law enforcement action. One of the big ones we had this month is there was a vehicle that reported stolen. We used the flock camera to aid in our investigation and we recovered the vehicle and made it arrest within. I had six hours, I talked to Cap Botham in Mississippi, actually, within two hours. So played a big part in that. We had a hundred and fifty-nine hours of work by the reserves. Some of those were shifts, some of them were coming in to cover people on vacation. Anyway, so obviously they're also picking up, especially this month with Thanksgiving, Christmas, we've got a lot of vacations, everybody's trying to use it. End of service, our end of year, just giving you an example of where we've been going. So as of today, we have taken four thousand seventy-nine calls per service. Last year, at this same time, actually, last year at the end of the year, we had taken two thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight. And I believe at that point, that was one of the most that we'd ever taken. So we've obviously increased our calls, again, our traffic calls are going down, it's our calls for service that are going up. With that being said, we filed a hundred and fifty-five criminal charges throughout the year, those are misdemeanor above. I was trying to get you some numbers on Flock, as far as what, how many hits we've had with the camera. Problem is, is Flock software doesn't allow that. So what ends up happening is I've been told to work around, unfortunately, it's not going to help us for this year. I have basically to go in every thirty days and pull down a report, because it doesn't save. However, I do have the total reads so far, and that's been, for this month, I'm sorry, total reads for this month, and this is about average. So if you take with this, I'm twelve. We've had thirty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-seven plate reads, one direction. Out of those, there were seven hundred and ninety-six hits, meaning that there was something, something wrong with either the plate, the driver was suspended, HDP, but there's multiple, there's a total of twelve, and we don't use all of them all the time. But that gives you an example of how many hits we're getting a month, how many plate reads we're getting. And as far as the numbers, that was really it, there's probably a little bit more, I wrote it down like I always do, as far as what type of call it was, so that, that was on the paperwork. If anybody's had questions, so let me know, we can get those out. We've already covered where we had meetings this morning, or this afternoon with the school for SRO, it is progressing. So as soon as we can, can get it rolling, we'll get there. I think that's it for all the numbers. I've got one other thing, does anybody have any questions on all the numbers that we went on?
I have a question.
Yes.
The flock camera, does that, does the officer on duty get alerted when that?
Okay, yes, so let me go briefly what it is. Basically, the flock camera is reading twenty-four seven. And it has certain things that it, it connects to. The most recent ad is, is IDAX, which is Indiana, where we go in, we can find stolen vehicles. We can look at, you know, those people who have suspended license or habitual traffic violators. That's been the newest, that's been out now for about five months, but. When, when camera has alert, if the officer is logged in, he can either log in on his mobile in the vehicle, he can log in on his cellphone, depending upon what he's doing. And when that alert comes, it just gives this big bing bing, and it tells what it is, tells what camera it reads. Because not only do we also read ours, but we've got two county cameras that we also watch as well. But we couldn't get access to those if we didn't have our camera system works. So that goes off, so a lot of times, the officers don't always have that up twenty-four seven. A lot of times they'll come in and they'll work, they'll pick an hour earlier in their shift, and they, they may turn it on and try to go, and they pick an hour later in their shift, or they may limit what kind of hits they get during the shift. You know, Amber Alerts are on there. They're trying to get silver alerts right now, it's kind of intermiss, depends on how they're entered. But those are the type of hits it gets. So yes, it can be going off constantly, actually, if you're not ready to work traffic and you're not in an area, because it happens quick, there's about a thirty-second delay from the camera read to the vehicle. So that vehicle's already thirty seconds ahead of you, which doesn't sound like a lot, but when you're going down Pendleton Avenue, if you're not in position, you might as well not even, unless it's someone stolen, then we've got to go try to find. Because it'll go off, I mean, it's, it's constantly going off all the time. But that answers the question, hopefully, that yes, they can turn that off, they can turn on, they can even get it set up where they get an email, it's set up on the phone. The newest upgrade they have is, what they told us originally, but it didn't work, but now, let's say I'm doing an investigation, now I got the vehicle, it's parked down at the the park, it's been there for a couple of days, I can take my phone, take a picture of the plate, and it'll run it for me. And it'll let me know if that vehicle has any hits, so it doesn't have to necessarily go by there. It's not like I can just walk around with my camera, but if I'm doing an investigation, I can take a hit. So that comes in handy too, a lot of times when we have abandoned vehicle or a vehicle, vehicle's been set for a few days, we can make sure that it wasn't used in a outside of our county and, and dropped in our county. So we haven't had any incidents of that, but it's still a tool that's available. Any other questions on numbers and Flock? Oksana brought something up, and I just, for thinking of it now, I've got all the council here, someone will bring this up. One of the things I noticed that when we were going through the last industrial or commercial complex event, I brought it up. To my knowledge, the planning does not require repeaters when we make requirements for complexes, such as an industrial building or a commercial building. Where I'm going to that, a lot of agencies now, because we are on the safety net, they require that any industrial building, because mostly they're aluminum, even our Dollar General, I lose radio, two feet in, I'm, I'm done. They require them to put repeaters up. They have somebody comes in and can tell them what to have for all safety, so that's for fire, that's for police. That just becomes a requirement for that building. It's actually relatively inexpensive for somebody who's putting in a, a large project. But if the council could please consider that, give it planning at a future time or whatever, but that would be something I think would be beneficial to the town, at least if they have it. If not, when the fire or police goes in the building, we lose all signal.
That, that'd be about the same as when we require a Knox box for the fire department, something like that, so.
And it does, it doesn't just benefit us, it benefits anybody on that, on that program, which for us, it's all of our holdings, the fire and everybody.
Very good. Hey, buddy? Thank you, sir. Alright. Planning report, Mr. Brian?
We did not have a quorum last week, so we did not have a meeting.
Alright. Utilities. Mr. John.
I'll give you an update on Atlas since last month. Walnut now is on, the new main is online, the customers are all feed, feeded off of that new main. Fifth Street is online. Every, every resident's being fed off of the new main, Fifth Street, Walnut have been cut and capped. The old mains are out of service now. The alley going between Seventh and Eighth with Atlas is now online, and that's all been cut and capped. Now they're on, back on Pendleton, they're having pressure issues again, so they can't keep pressure in the new main, so they'll be cutting it up again.
As in cutting up, I'm sorry. As in cutting up Pendleton Avenue?
Yes. There's another leak somewhere.
What else you got for us, sir?
The crews came together, Brandon, Teague, everybody, got all the plows and all the trucks all ready for snow, hopefully we don't get none. But they all came together and it's, it's all set up. Our new salt spreader is, is been picked up and it is mounted on the utility truck. Appreciate that, and that's about the gist of the month. Been pretty busy. We did get the water meters in, and I've already used eighteen of them, twenty. We, we did get them in, yes.
Okay, and then we have a proposal that has come into us. So I guess we have a heater issue at the new, at the water plant.
Well, you do know about the.
Well, one of the heaters went out, the main heater, there's three heaters down there, and the main heater has the motherboard, the circuit board, whatever you'd like to call it in it. The way that heater was built, it drips down the spout and gets its motherboard wet, and it dries almost once a year. This will be the third motherboard in my third year, so I guess Absolute came in to give us a bid on.
Yes, and that's what you're seeing there now, is we called Absolute, John called Absolute to come in, they are our local company, to fix the problem that we had to get heat in the water plant, which I think is very crucial to have heat in the water plant. And so while they were there, we had them look at redesigning and updating our water, as John said, the heat in the water plant. As John said, it's been like once a year it goes out. These are, these proposals are for one Mitsubishi mini split and then keeping two of the current heaters that are working. Or replacing the whole system with a two Mitsubishi mini splits, which are both heating and cooling units. Which would upgrade both the heating and cooling systems. My suggestion, of course, is do both of them and redo the whole heating system in there to, these Mitsubishi's are twelve year warranty.
Oh, wow.
So. And they work really well.
Alright, so what we have is we have the, the single mini split is priced at eight thousand five hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-nine cents. And replacing both heating systems with two of them is seventeen thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. Basically, the price difference.
Now then, I don't know, I don't know how we are fixed on money as far as the water system, plant. But.
Yeah.
Are we good on that?
Yeah.
Water's in good shape.
Yeah, water's in good shape. Teresa's voice is alright, bud.
Everybody's in good shape now? And they'll be able to, I think they'll be able to get in there in January and do some of that work, especially if we okay the proposal.
Well, out of the question from the definition of insanity, how much is that board that we replace every year?
I think it's around eight, eight hundred to a thousand dollars.
Yeah, it was almost nine hundred dollars.
Yeah, so.
It was on the.
That'll pay for itself in ten years.
And still have two years worth of warranty on it.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, well, I would entertain a motion for either of these proposals.
I would make the motion that we do both, both heaters and re, and redo the whole thing out for the water plant.
What, okay, one moment. With that being seventeen thousand plus dollars, is that something we need additional bits for?
Nope.
Nope?
Nope, under twenty-five.
Under twenty-five. That is definitely under twenty-five, alright. Alright, we have a motion, we have a second?
A second.
We have motion and second?
Chad.
Yes.
Bryan.
Yes.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Try to get the actress.
So would Absolute have given them a time, okay?
Anything else, sir?
Um, I'd just like to throw this out there. Like I was just asked, we did get the twenty extra water meters and eighteen of them already went out. I'd like to put it, put it up in the air, let you guys know on it for a while. I'd like to put our name on a list for another pallet of meters, since we are supposed to change ten percent of our meters each year. And our senses are starting to go bad because they're digital and a lot of them are starting to go bad. But even if we get on the list, we don't, we can deny it, but the list is already out to August and September now.
Gotcha.
When we get our first meters, if we put it in right now.
I would ask that you do a little research for us. How many meters did we go through this year in twenty twenty-three total, not counting new construction? And then what, how many meters based on that replacement do we need for this year to keep up on replacements? Because then, planning for growth and all of that's a completely separate number. But we probably need to be able to make an educated guess of what's the best to be able to budget out for the whole year.
So we have what?
Since we've already, since we've already done a budget.
Well, a skid is a hundred and forty-four meters. Ten percent of our meters is roughly around a hundred meters, we'll be switching on a year.
Do we have a thousand water meters?
Almost. That's a good thing, though, it's not a thousand, it might be crap money for the lead and cover. But yeah, I just like to throw it out there. Putting our name on a list is free, we can deny it, we don't gotta accept it. I just don't wanna.
I can say, yeah, if there's, if no, if there's no contract.
No.
We can at least sprinkle our name on there now and then get us the details and then bring it to the next meeting. And we might even up the number at that point, you know, depending on the data that you get.
That's like thirty thousand.
But that's where, that's where we need to know the numbers and we'll look at it, so, for the next meeting.
Alright.
Yeah, appreciate it, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Parks contacted us, they didn't have anything and they are not here. Redevelopment Commission, as stated, we do have openings, we had two openings if all three existing members stay. So if anyone knows, anyone interested on being on the redevelopment commission, please reach out to us. Info@lapelindiana.org. And part of our plan is the current members are discussing what do we see as our priorities? That we want to accomplish in the redevelopment department next year. Alright, next, office and administration.
I think I said all I need to say.
I forgot to add, we received over thirty applicants for the utility billing clerk. We're going to start, we're gonna wait to get through the holidays and start doing interviews the ninth, the ninth of January.
They're down to five, six.
Six, they're down to, down to six, we'll start with those and we still have all the other ones.
Alright.
Just so you guys all know, I've told a couple of you, I will probably work on Tuesday, we're closed. But that's a day that I could go in and there's no phones and no people coming in to try to get some things caught up that I might be hiding.
Yes, sir.
I do, I may have a floor for a moment. Lisa, who's been very good, staff member. Who is not currently related to you, but could be.
Maybe.
Okay, through marriage, which would be, which would violate nepotism law. It would be a shame to lose her because of that. And so I sent you all an org chart, a proposed org chart that would have basically a town office manager, I can't remember what you called it. I don't know if there's anything in the salary ordinance that would allow her to fill that spot, but, a spot. On the town administration side, where she would be directly reporting to you all. As basically a town administrative employee and not directly relating, reporting to the clerk. So we wanted to bring that to your attention. There's no, you know, intentional, it's out there in the, in the public. We'd hate for, I think that Teresa and I have talked and if, you know, if, if they continue, we know that she wouldn't be able to stay. In, in, in that position, if it's a deputy clerk or reporting directly to the clerk treasurer. She could stay in a position if she's directly reporting to either town administration or to the town council. So just something to think about, please. And I applaud Teresa for her concern, for watching out for the integrity of the law, following the law, making you all aware. She's a good employee, would hate to lose her because of that.
She learns so quick. The bad part is, is her daughter's been sick, she's been sick this week, so there, she's not been here much this week. But when she's here, she takes care of all the phone calls, all the payments she does, all that stuff.
And currently, she is a temporary seasonal employee, basically, under the salary ordinance, so.
Instant work to like, recognize who she was.
Potential future daughter-in-law.
Yeah, as I just.
Future daughter-in-law, which was on the list of nepotism violations. I don't know if that current temporary employee reports in, in the salary ordinance in the scheme of things. Does that temporary employee report to the treasurer's office or does that?
That's.
So currently in her position that she's in, she would not, she would not be a problem.
Correct, that's, but that is a temporary, non-permanent seasonal position as it stands right now.
Yeah, we were thinking about when she does become an elected official, that would be an issue because if, if she's a clerk employee, I didn't realize that. That seasonal employee already reports to you, so okay, just wanted to clarify.
Yes, in the salary ordinance.
Misinformation loves to be, be dealt.
Yes.
It's not, it gets packed out.
In the salary ordinance, there was an opening, or there's, there's a position that's created, it's on the books for a temporary seasonal. And that is, we brought her in instead of having to go through and create a position, create all of those things.
I got you, I just didn't want, if she was in, if she was in Paulus' position, she'd have been a clerk employee.
Correct.
She's not in Paulus' position, she's in, okay.
Right.
Thank you for the clarification.
She would be the same equivalent of a utility worker sitting up there helping answer the phones to do those things.
Got you. Thank you.
Does she wanna stay full-time or she want part-time?
If she was to want to stay, it would probably be part-time anyway.
And we would have to create a position, open it up for applications to do all those things.
And in that, in that suggested scenario, I think I had suggested a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, nine to three employee. Just somebody to, you know, nine o'clock, three o'clock, temp, uh, part-time, answer phones. Do some of those work, for the town administration side, because right now, there are, your massive town administration department has zero employees.
Okay, council member comments and concerns, anything the group would like to bring up?
I'm sorry.
Uh, we're at the council member comments and concerns, Gary, is there anything that anyone?
I'm sorry, we, we were discussing the, the date of our next meeting down here and it's actually twenty-four, January eighteenth.
Oh, yeah, thank you, thank you, you know, we were trying to go back in time.
I'm sorry to bring that up in a.
Sorry, we're trying to relive time.
Yeah, well, twenty-three is shot, so let's open the ball.
Thank you, that's gonna be a tough one.
Do we want to go ahead and set our workshop date? Or set a date for a workshop?
Remember what day I said you should have that?
Yes, the tenth.
I said Saturday.
A Saturday, you want it on a Saturday?
I have found that most of those organizational workshops, the beginning of the year, at nine to twelve on a Saturday are some of the best times to do. Sorry.
Pick a Saturday. And.
I am good with Saturday, the sixth, or the evening of Wednesday, the tenth.
It's entirely up to you guys.
Sounds like our.
Let's do it. Dive in.
At nine, the sixth.
Nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock on the sixth?
Nine o'clock.
Nine noon. Three hours, very good.
Now then, the other question that we had earlier. Is location. Do we wanna talk about that tonight?
Yes, we do have a potential new location that has arisen, that is the Lions Club Building. It's, we would not hear that, it's a little smaller, we have, Chad and I were talking today about getting. This is an expense of buying maybe some monitors, some big monitors that are electronics, it would be easier to see the presentations and the sound would not be an issue. So you all could hear with our sound system. They have offered it for?
Fifty dollars a meeting, and we pay sixty here for the meeting. And they would just give us a key and, the only problem we thought of was in the summer at baseball. But they have signs that we could go down earlier in the day and put the signs up. And he said they're very respectful because they all work together out there, so.
Right, and that's just one day a month.
Right, well, me too, because we would do the planning.
You do planning there?
We'd like to try to get as much uniform meeting space as possible. So.
And I figure the BZA doesn't meet all the time, but they could be, we let them know that we're gonna have another one. Or that we, that we're gonna have a BZA meeting as long as they don't have anything there, we could do it there.
In other words, like Parks meetings are currently going to Town Hall, they would move there, that way, all of our meetings, consistent location, plenty of room, all of that, so.
Do we have the Parks meetings, do they have enough public coming to them to?
You know, Brian, I think that in the effort for us to be as open as possible, the back room of the Town Hall just doesn't work. They are a, they are a very important.